And we just were unable to make that successful. So we are going to try to make this successful so we can hold our entire commission meeting. If we continue to run into some hassles, we may end up having a short commission meeting with two items that need to be taken care of today. And we may have to recess the rest of the meeting for tomorrow. Just to give you an idea, Commissioner Engen is online. The rest of the commissioners are here at the county office building, so we would have forum. So I just want you to know that we are working our best to make sure that our technology is working. But we don't want you to feel like you're going to miss out on anything. And if there are issues, please let someone know. Michelle Field is on. You can let her know if you're unable to hear things going on during the course of the meeting. We apologize for this problem. But obviously, technology is sometimes has its own mind, I guess. So we just need to be flexible. You ready? Okay, we are ready. Are we ready?
I gotta turn this on.
Okay. Does everyone hear me? Thumbs up for let. Okay. Hear me? Good, good. Okay. We will begin the Grand Forks County Commission meeting. Today is, what is it? Today is April 6th. And we will begin, as I said earlier, all commissioners are in the chambers with the exception of Commissioner Engen. He is joining by Zoom call or by phone and we see him. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. The three minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Knopf. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded by Commissioner Ross. If there are no changes requested to be made, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Paul.
I would like to move to add Becky Alt to PSEP to our agenda.
Okay, then we will add Ms. Alt probably at 6B. We will go through the recess to convening the county building authority and get through that before we bring on Ms. Alt. Anything else? Okay, if that is the change, is there a second on that approval of the Order of Agenda?
I have seconds. Motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda. We have bills, employers, employee status changes, overtime, the financial report from February, and a game of chance. Would anybody like anything pulled from the Consent Agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. So assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We now are going to recess the county commission meeting and convene the Grand Forks County Building Authority. Ms. Knopf is the chair of the Building Authority. Would someone like to make a motion to do that?
Motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Grand Forks County Building Authority.
Okay, it has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Ms. Knopf, then you will take over at this point.
I'll follow the Grand Forks County Building Authority Order. And, you know, for the record, all commissioners are present. Ms. Nelson, do you have something for us to start us out?
Um, Madam President, members of the Building Authority, I, there was a sale today of the bonds and Fidelity. See, Fidelity, what was the name of the company? Fidelity Capital Management was the best bid that was received on the bond. We will be saving almost $200,000 over the life of the bond. And I will need a motion by the Building Authority to approve the resolution, which includes the sale of those bonds to Fidelity Capital Market Markets. And for the Grand Forks County Building Authority taxable lease revenue refunding bond series 2021 with the President's signature.
Hey, you put the request. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve that.
Commissioner Ross, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
You get a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Here is. Okay, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the Grand Forks County Building Authority meeting and to reconvene as the Grand Forks County Commission meeting.
Madam Chair, I would make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I would second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, moving on. Number six, the sale and the award of refunding of the Grand Forks County Building Authority the taxable lease revenue bond series 2021. Ms. Nelson, we need to approve the same motion that took place at the Grand Forks County Building Authority, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we need a motion. Do you want to repeat that?
Sure. To approve the, to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of the Grand Forks County Building Authority taxable lease revenue refunding bond series 2021 with the Chair's signature.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion to approve that? Make a motion to approve that?
Yes, motion to approve the refunding of the Grand Forks County Building Authority taxable relief, taxable lease revenue bond series 2021.
With the Chair's signature?
With the Chair's signature. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a second to that motion?
Second, Madam Chair.
All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can't hear.
Madam Chair, I was thinking Ann Willett from Public Financial Management is on the call and she may have some comments for us.
Okay, Ms. Willett, are you on the call?
I am, thank you.
Yes, would you like to make some comments?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Ford, Ms. Nelson. My name is Ann Willett. I'm with PFM Financial Advisors. You all may recognize the name Myron Knudson. He was my predecessor. I worked with him for many years in North Dakota and he is now retired. So we were keeping an eye on the Building Authority's lease revenue bonds. And since we have been seeing such low interest rates, we thought it would be a good idea for the Building Authority to go ahead and refinance those bonds for interest savings. So we had a very successful sale today. We received six bids this morning. And like Ms. Nelson said, the estimated savings are around $200,000 over the life of the bonds, which is great. So congratulations, we had a very successful sale. Does anybody have any questions?
I do not believe there are any questions here today, but a very kind thank you for all the work that you have done and being able to save some dollars today is always good news for the county.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Willett, for your comments. They're very much appreciated.
Okay, then, we will move on to 6B and that is with Becky Alt, who is the Director of PSEP. Are you available, Ms. Alt?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you might want to speak up.
Okay. It is, it is that time of year again where we recognize our dispatch staff for the wonderful work they do. And so I stand before you today, or I sit before you today, asking that the Commission proclaim next week, April 11th through 17th, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. I do have a proclamation that is on hand for Commissioner Peach to sign, but it's just a nice recognition to, of staff and the fine work that they do. I should mention that we had more calls for service in 2020 than ever on record. Our staff processed 94,847 calls for service. And this compares to 2019 of 91,714. So we just continue to get busier. I should also mention that a couple thousand of those are actually related to the Sheriff's Office. So if you're hearing from your sheriff that they're busy, you're, we're definitely seeing the numbers. So there's just more activity going on. And staff never missed a beat during the pandemic. We're very fortunate. You may recall that we set up a backup PSEP in the EOC so that we could separate staff as needed. During the pandemic, if we had close contacts, we just needed our staff because we're kind of a mighty small team. And so we needed people to work. And so we separated them out. And I'm just so very proud of staff. And, and so I asked for the Commissioners to go ahead and proclaim next week as National Telecommunicator Week.
Well, Ms. Alt, I think that based on the level of work that you and your staff do, obviously, I believe that the Commission would be more than happy to put a, to sign the proclamation and move forward on April 11th through the 17th in 2021. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to designate next week as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Grand Forks County.
With the Chair's signature?
With the Chair's signature, yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna take me a while to get used to that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign. The motion is carried. And Ms. Alt, please congratulate all of your staff for the hard work that they do. This is a job that you take home with you every day. It's not that you put in your four, eight, or 12-hour shift and then you walk away from your shift and you're done for that time. It's something that, that you take with you on a daily basis, as many of jobs that do with, with emergency management. And so thank you to you and to all of your staff for all of the hard work that they do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, and thank you very much for visiting with us. Have a nice day. Okay, then, the next item on the agenda is the Grand Forks Trail Joint Water Resource District. The Thompson Drainage Improvement District, number 72, Project Right-Away. And I believe Ms. Plumstead, are you going to be reporting on that?
I believe it will be Chris McShane.
Oh, is Chris McShane on the line with us? Okay, Chris, are you with us?
I am Chairman Peach.
Oh, wonderful. Chris McShane is going to give us some information relative to this drainage improvement district. So please go ahead.
Thank you Chairman, or Chairwoman Peach. My name is Chris McShane and I appreciate the opportunity to present to the County Commission today to introduce the topic that we hope, the Water Resource District hopes, will be addressed by the County Commission at its May 18th meeting. So just to make sure everybody understands, there is no action that the, the Commission needs to take today. Today, my presentation is for purposes of, of information and to answer any questions that might come up. Again, my name is Chris McShane. I'm one, I'm one of the attorneys for the Grand Forks Trail Joint Water Resource District. This is a joint water resource district formed between Grand Forks and Trail County. And it's formed for purposes of, of water that, that transverses the county line. One of the projects that crosses the county line is the Thompson 72 project. This is a, a, a project that is authorized by Chapter 61-16.1 of the North Dakota Sentry Code. And because the project crosses the, the county line, the, the Joint Water Resource District is in charge of that. With me today, we have two members of the Grand Forks Water Resource District, Richard Axvig and Mr. Purdue, Tom Purdue. We also have, I believe, the Secretary Treasurer of the Grand Forks Water Resource District, along with the design engineer for the Thompson 72 project. So hopefully, between the, the five of us, we can, can answer any questions that might come up from the Commission here. The Thompson 72 drainage project is, is one that has been a long time in the making. It covers, I believe, seven miles. There are 22 different property owners that are impacted by the, the project. And we need to acquire certain property rights from each of those 22 property owners. Of the 22, there are only two that are left where we do not have a signed purchase agreement authorizing the Joint Water Resource District to construct the project on their property. One of those property owners is in the process of signing. He, he, the Water Resource District managers have had direct contact with him and he is in agreement with the, with the acquisition. It's just a matter of getting the, the acquisition documents signed. The final property owner is Caroline Heskin. Ms. Heskin owns property that is located immediately adjacent to the property lot or the, the county line. And her property lies in Grand Forks County. To date, we have had months of negotiations. And unfortunately, the Joint Water Resource District has not been able to reach an, an agreement with Ms. Heskin. The statutory step to acquire the right of way necessary for a, a water resource district project authorized under Chapter 61-16.1 includes a, a lengthy negotiation process. And I appreciate whoever's running the, the, the screen here, but that negotiation process is detailed in, in the letter that's identified on the screen. There was initially a formal, an informal negotiation process that took place throughout much of last fall. That was followed by a formal offer letter that was sent in December of 2020. Then that was, then followed up with an invitation to meet with the Joint Water Resource District in January of 2021. And then there was a notice sent to Ms. Heskin in March of 2021 indicating that there is an intent to take possession of her property for purposes of this project. What is being shown on the screen and what's in your packet as, as the Commission is a, a draft of a, a request letter because your packet was put together last week. And, and we didn't have final authority from the Joint Water Resource District to send this letter. This was what we anticipated sending. The Joint Water Resource District met this morning and they approved the, approved me sending this request to the Grand Forks County Commission. And what this request is, is the, the second to last step in the acquisition process outlined in 61-16.109-sub-2b3, which is a, a very long and detailed process for, for right-of-way acquisition. And unfortunately, the, the County Commission, where the property lies, is, is at the end of that process. You guys have not been involved up to this point, but you get to be, get to be put in the unenviable, unenviable position of approving the acquisition of the right-of-way through the quick-take process. The, the real role of the water resource, or the, the real role of the County Commission after the Water Resource District has gone through this whole process is to have a public meeting and invite the landowner to that public meeting. Prior to or at that public meeting, the county must get verification from the, the Chairman of the Water Resource District saying that quick-take was not threatened or even referenced throughout the negotiation process. And if it confirms that, that quick-take was not threatened or, or referenced, is then up to the county to approve the use of quick-take for the acquisition of the right-of-way. If the county approves the use of quick-take, then the final step gets to be put in place. And that final step is for the Water Resource District to deposit the amount of the last written offer with the, the Clerk of District Court. The clerk then sends notice that that offer has been, or that, that deposit has been made. That is sent to Ms. Heskin. And as soon as that notice has been sent to Ms. Heskin, then at that point, the Water Resource District has permission to, to access the property and construct the project. So the, the draft letter that is in your packet has been replaced by a, in a formal offer that I sent Chairwoman Peach this afternoon. And, and that formal offer is to, is to have a public meeting about this matter on May 18th. If the county is okay with that, then notice must be given to Ms. Heskin. My office has, has drafted a, a, a form of a letter and I'm working with Mr. Ford to figure out the details of making sure that Ms. Heskin, who lives in Washington DC, can participate in the meeting and that she is given proper notice. So if the, the county is, is, is amenable to having a meeting in a month and a half here, then we will work with, with county staff to make sure that that notice is sent to Ms. Heskin. We would ask that it be sent to her, likely by either FedEx or UPS, who will confirm that it has been delivered. We've had difficulty getting documents to Ms. Heskin in the past and she has claimed that she didn't get them. Part of those claims have, have been to Ms. Nelson because Ms. Heskin has, has raised some issues with, with the Assessment District. And it, and it's also requested that it be sent by a commercial carrier for, for the speed and efficiency to make sure that it gets there in a timely manner. Are there any questions for me or for any of the, the managers who sit on the, the Joint Water Resource District or even the design engineer for this project?
Madam Chair, this is Dave.
Go ahead, Ms. Commissioner Engen.
Right, Mr. McShane, if there is a quick take, does the owner have the right then later to sue for what the owner would claim is the amount that should have been paid over and above the deposit you make?
Commissioner Engen, that's a, that's a good question. And the answer is yes. The process would be that the, the Water Resource District would make the deposit of the last written offer and the landowner would be served by the, the Clerk of District Court. We will, will also conduct personal service to make sure that, that she has that notice and make sure she has an understanding that her property, at least possession of her property for purposes of the drain has been transferred to the Water Resource District. She will then have 30 days to appeal the amount of the deposit. And, and at that point, she can appeal to the District Court. If she does, then she can go through a, a full court process to, to do discovery, to have expert witnesses and ultimately have a trial if she, if she, if she so chooses. That trial can be in front of a jury of as many as nine jurors. And a determination of just compensation will be made at, at that point if she is not satisfied with the, the amount on deposit.
With respect to the offer that you've made, I, I assume that was probably done along the lines of the formula that you used for all the others. Would that be accurate?
Commissioner Engen, that is correct. It, the, the formula that was used for the other 21 property owners was, was the same except for three property owners where we had to get a, an appraisal for. We had initially had a, an appraisal to get us in the ballpark. Because it's a, it's a linear drain, the appraiser gave a, a valuation of tillable acres in the, in the area of that, that linear property rates. And, and that was used as the basis. But then to, the, the statute for right-of-way acquisition requires that we get a specific appraisal for the property that's being acquired. So that was, was accomplished. Kyle Nelson from Farmers National, who is a certified general appraiser licensed in North Dakota, completed the appraisal and the offer was, or the, the appraisal was actually slightly lower than the offer that had previously made to Ms. Heskin. So the joint board agreed to, to, to offer what it had previously offered. So, so it's all in line based upon a, a per acre formula.
Thank you.
Okay, do any other Commissioners have any questions of Mr. McShane or anyone else that's on the line? If not, this is basically information coming from Mr. McShane. The letter that we have on the screen in front of us is basically a letter that's coming from Onsted Twitchell. I do not sign anything. My name is on it, but this is basically an invitation for May 18th, when the, when the hearing will be held. And Mr. McShane, do you want us to send the letter by FedEx then?
Chairwoman Peach, the, the letter that is actually on the screen is, is a request to the county, but the invitation to Ms. Heskin will be from the county to Ms. Heskin. I, I will prepare the letter and provide that to your staff. It can be signed by, by any representative of, of the county. It could be you, it could be a staff member, a, as long as it is on county letterhead and, and, and as an invitation to a, a regular, well, it doesn't even need to be regular. It could be a special meeting if you so choose, but to a, a, a meeting of the County Commission. And that meeting would have to be public. She would be invited to, to attend. Generally, the, the landowner is, is invited to participate. But this is not a public hearing, so the, the public as a whole or, or anybody other than a landowner would not necessarily have the right to present unless the, the Commission desires to hear from, from others on the matter.
Okay, and in light of that, then, the letter should be prepared by your agency and sent to Grand Forks County. We do need, because the Chair would be signing a letter, we do need a motion from the full Commission approving that the county is going to set this date as the time of the meeting and that I can sign the document. So is there someone who would like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Dave. I'll make the motion that the Chair be able to sign a letter put together by Mr. McShane's staff, notifying the landowner of the hearing on the 18th of May.
Okay, and is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, then assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. So then, Mr. McShane, if you want to get the letter ready and send it to myself and to Debbie Nelson, we'll get it on Grand Forks County Stationery. I will make arrangements to sign it and then we will get it sent on to Washington DC via, I think we'll use FedEx to get that sent to the, the client that we're dealing with. Okay? Any other comments, Mr. McShane?
No, I, I appreciate the action of the Commission and we look forward to being back in front of you on May 18th. At that time, we will provide even more supporting information showing what has taken place up to this point. And we will, you know, ask for your permission to to move forward with the the process at that time. And I will work with with Ms. Nelson to get that letter to you likely tomorrow.
Okay, and then if you want to make sure that you tell her what you want put on the agenda, we'll place you on the agenda for the May 18th meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it. Will.
Okay, wonderful. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public health, our COVID-19 update. And we are so happy to see Ms. Swanson in person. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Peach and members of the commission. It really is a pleasure to be here. I am also welcome when I walk into the room, so thank you very much. And I would also like to say that the staff at Grand Forks Public Health Department feels very supported by the Grand Forks County Commission. So thank you for that. And it's fitting that I'm here today because it is National Public Health Week, and we didn't have a resolution for you to sign. But I did want to just acknowledge that the Public Health Department here in Grand Forks County has worked tirelessly over the last 13, 14 months. And we feel supported by you and we feel supported by our national colleagues celebrating Public Health Week. Unfortunately, we've had to set aside some of our other work that we normally do and are not able to celebrate in ways that we normally would. I assure everyone, we will have cake and eat together someday. So the COVID update for today, I'll let you advance the slides, Debbie, and I'll go through them fairly quickly. The the bottom line is is first here in this particular one, and I did want to talk about some of that. You know what? I think that is not the right document. So I wonder if I sent you the wrong one or if you're pulling up an old one. I think that is from the commission agenda, and it was last time, two weeks ago. So I'll just run through the one that I sent you today right before this meeting. And if you don't have it up, that's totally fine.
This was the only one that I had. Michael sent this to me before Easter and said, I'm sorry, I usually send it to you later. But so there's another one that came today?
And I apologize. There was one that came today that was late. So I'll just run it through it really quickly. The health officer's dashboard is currently at a yellow level. We've been at a yellow level for 21 days now, three weeks ago. We had two full weeks of green level, and at that time, Dr. Wallace did remove this mask order. So we're 21 days into a yellow level, which is our moderate risk. As far as vaccination bows are on our dashboard, we're at about 35.3%. Grand Forks County has had one dose, and about 23.6% is fully vaccinated. So we're on our way to that magical herd immunity that you hear us talk about through vaccination, getting to about 60%. I would caution everyone, though, that as we hear more and more about new vaccines that are vaccines that are newly being tested on younger ages. For example, the Pfizer vaccine is eligible to be given to youth as young as 16. They're testing it on 12 to 16-year-olds, for 12 to 15-year-olds. And so if that becomes approved, then our denominator becomes a little bit larger, and that herd immunity means we have more people to encompass to get vaccinated. The next slide on your document just shows like a really nice visual of the the number of people in a little visual of green are the people that have been fully vaccinated. Yellow represents 500. Each person represents 500. Yellow are people who have had one dose. And then the red are people that we still need to get vaccinated to get to that herd immunity. The black indicates that they're eligible to be vaccinated, but they don't have to be. And then the gray people are those that were are not, they're like the 015 age population and not eligible. So it's really nice when we can turn those little people green each week with each vaccination clinic that we do. Our new cases for today were 15. And you can see that we've just been having a slow rise at the bottom here, and it's just been kind of like a little wave up and down. Nothing as dramatic as what we're seeing in past county. But I would caution everyone that variants are out there and they are present across the state, including in Grand Forks County. So that's what we're really watching for, is increased transmissibility as a result of variants. I'm going to skip all the way to the very end of the presentation because the slides you can read through and you can see those numbers. You can see how we compare to other metropolitan areas. On the slide, which it which shows our comparison, the 78% positivity, you can see a really nice huge rise with the green line with past county. But Grand Forks has had a more moderate rise, so we're just watching that. So the bottom line are kind of my summary comments that I want to make, which is our strengths are that we do have really high vaccination rates for the population 65 and older. And we have a rapid and sustained progress between Grand Forks and Polk counties. So as I was reminded by someone just this morning, we need to look at not only what's happening in Grand Forks County, but what's happening all around this and what's happening across the state and across the nation, because people are starting to travel. So it's great that we're measuring our success and what we're doing here to ensure that there's good vaccination everywhere. And we do see the the metropolitan statistical area of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks and the two counties increasing together, which is good. We also have really low hospitalization rates and deaths despite this increased incidence. So that's a good thing, and it's because we have so many people that are older who've been vaccinated, or people with chronic diseases. When we started out prioritizing them, that was a good thing because it's really about our hospitalizations or deaths count. Unfortunately, we did have a death today in Grand Forks County, reported today, of 40, someone in their 40s. So it's really hard on to see that. Some of our weaknesses are just that continued increase that I mentioned already. And this might be part of a regional increase or something wider. And then our opportunities. Well, now we have vaccine eligible to anyone who wants to receive it. We continue to do our clinics at the Alara Center in combination with All True, and we are full tomorrow. And on Saturday, we have a really good uptake, but then our clinic appointments are starting to taper off a little bit as people find vaccine available to them, or is there maybe not sure that they might get the vaccine? So we're going to be working really hard at some outreach efforts. But it's available to anyone, all ages, anyone 16 and older. We also are getting the Johnson and Johnson vaccine now in greater supply, and that's a vaccine that's given one time only. You do not need a second dose. We have about 900 doses that we'll administer on Saturday and 1,000 doses going to UMD so that students can be fully vaccinated before they leave campus. As already mentioned, another opportunity is this vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine that's being tested on 12 to 15-year-olds. And hopefully, we'll have that throughout the summer and make sure that we have a well-vaccinated population when school starts in the fall. And there's a great opportunity there. Students are getting sports physicals, are getting vaccinations. Their routine vaccinations in the summer to include COVID vaccine. Our threats still are the unknown potential impact of these variants. They're active, and you know, they're out there. There are several different ones. They are tested on samples when there's a reason or a suspicion, like travel or somebody that's very ill. And it's surveillance, so it's not something that we can use for treatment necessarily, but it does help us to know what the presence is. Another testing mechanism that's out there that's also surveillance is the wastewater testing, which is down in the city of Grand Forks and some other jurisdictions across the state. And it's a little bit predictive. It tells us before the case counts go up, it starts to rise at the wastewater. So that's been a nice thing to add to it. So I think that concludes most of my remarks unless there are any questions from the commission. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here in person in my presentation.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Swanson? Any questions? Okay, I guess I do have one question. So with the a couple of weeks ago, when we had the meetings on Wednesday afternoon, I know there was a question of the variants. And the State Health Department was not giving out very much information on the variants, the locations, things like that. What was the outcome? I believe Michael Doolitz was going to talk or had a meeting with the State Health Department the next day. So what was the outcome of that discussion?
Chairwoman Peach and members of the commission, the question was asked. And basically, the answer is that until such time as there's a larger sample size, they're not able to release those individual results because they're so small per county, per location. But what they have done, and we're hoping that this will be available soon, is to just show the total number in North Dakota and the types. Because there are, I believe, at least four different variants that have been present in the surveillance testing, and they have the numbers by when, the dates that they show now. So you can see that they increase and each one of them increases. And so I would call it some aggregate data should be available soon. And we really made a case for that last Thursday when we talked with the State Health Department because we believe it's a really great way to initiate more vaccinations.
Wonderful. And the other question I've been getting is people are wondering whether they're taking the the one-shot vaccination or the two-shot. Is this going, and you may not know the answer. Is this going to be a vaccination that's a one-time vaccination? Or will this be something like our two shots that ends up being an annual event?
Chairwoman Peach and members of the commission, that is a great question and still not fully answered yet, but something that we are definitely keeping track of. The epidemiologists are constantly looking at the data, looking at information. I think that because of the nature of this pandemic, it's going to be with us for a while. And I think we're going to learn more and more about what impact the vaccines have had. But what we're seeing right now is dramatic drops in hospitalizations, cases, hospitalizations and deaths in those who have been vaccinated. And if that changes, that will be a really good indicator that perhaps we need to be looking at boosters and doing things annually for blue shot. And because of the variants, that would be the most likely reason we would have to do that. Just like we do with blue shots, the strains change every year, and we look at the previous year's circulation.
Thank you very much for that information. Anybody else have a question?
I do. Ms. Swanson, can you just explain the wastewater process to me? I I don't understand that. And so I'm sure in my mind, I've got some big picture that probably isn't.
Commissioner Noff and members of the commission, I'm not as familiar with the process by which they collect the samples. I've been told there's a difference between groundwater and some other water, and that they don't use the groundwater. But I am not really clear on that. But what I do know is that they they can test it, and they get a really good sample of how much of an increase occurs. And then they map that against the actual cases. And there's really strong correlation in that the wastewater sampling goes up before the cases go up, because people are shedding the virus while they're infectious.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I can gladly get you more information about the process. And in several cities across North Dakota that are doing this testing now. They're unfortunately not able to test for variants in that process at this time. It's very late on time.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions of Ms. Swanson? All right, if there are no other questions, thank you very, very much, and it was so good to see you. Okay, moving on. Ms. Gatz-Carice, the Emergency Management Director. Fire emergency declaration.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This is a brief revisit. As you know, the sheriff and I approached Commissioner Peach about doing a burn ban and a fire declaration back on the 29th of March, and she did sign that. So what I am here to discuss today is to request a motion to have the entire commission continue that fire emergency declaration. The governor did issue a statewide fire emergency, I believe, on April 1st. So we would like you to, as a body, continue this fire emergency for us.
So Ms. Gatz, would you like that dated April 1st, or did the ban expire today?
Ms. Nelson, can you help me out on that? I don't believe there was an expiration.
Madam Chair. Member of the commission, are we talking about the fire emergency declaration?
Yes, we are.
I think I think, Carrie, you were saying that it didn't expire, that they just had to put it in place.
Somebody is really excited to share news with us.
Ms. Onsted, was that a seven-day because only the chair signed it, and so then it needed to be approved by the whole body?
Ms. Gatz, members of the commission, that is correct. It's when the the principal officer of the county issues an order, it's valid for seven days. I believe it was issued last Monday, the 29th. Read the seventh data yesterday, April 1st.
So then, Commissioner Peach, to answer your question, we will likely need a new date, like today.
Okay, so April 6th would be the start date of the fire emergency declaration.
Correct.
Okay, and with the fire emergency declaration, is that separate then from the burn ban? Or are they the same thing?
They're the same but different. And and I believe Mr. Stromberg is going to discuss the the details of the burn ban with you.
Okay, so we should move forward on the fire emergency declaration that should begin on Tuesday, April 6th, until further notice. Would that be correct and remain in effect until further notice?
Correct.
Okay, so any questions of commissioners to Ms. Gatz? If there are no questions, would someone like to entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we put on the emergency fire emergency declaration and still further notice be signed by all commissioners.
Okay, and is there a second to that motion?
Sign your from all or just the chair?
Madam Chair, there is nothing to sign. It's just continuing on with the the one that expired. There, I have no document for anybody to sign.
So the continuation would be enough as far as the motion, and then I have signed the first one?
Right, correct.
I haven't signed it.
For a second, yeah, you want to.
I did, okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign. The fire emergency declaration is now in effect. Anything else, Ms. Gatz?
No, ma'am. That was it for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have with the Sheriff's Department, the burn ban. Hi.
Dave Stromberg, in the Sheriff's Office, Attorney for Sheriff Schneider. We did, or there was a temporary ban that's put in place. It expired yesterday. So we would be looking for the mission to approve you to sign the new burn ban. That would be in place until further notice or until conditions approved and you provoke the order. Sheriff Schneider spoke with Chief Lorenz. He also agrees that that there needs to be a burn ban in place. Also, that the burn ban would include recreational fires within the city of Grand Forks, with the caveat that the chair lives back. If conditions approved with the chief of the department, Sheriff Schneider, I'm giving you that information.
Okay, and would that burn ban start effective today then?
Soon as soon.
Okay, any questions? Any questions? Okay, would someone like to entertain a motion for the burn ban to begin today, signed by myself and in place until further notice, whether the if the weather improves or to stay in place if we continue with the draw?
I would make that decision.
Commissioner Noff, okay, any discussion? If there's no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Stromberg. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Director of Administration, Mr. Ford.
I have nothing to report to the commission today, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Then State's Attorney, Ms. Onsted.
Madam Chair, members of the board. I submitted to you a two new two new, uh, job descriptions for positions in our office as well as two employee status change forms. This is relevant to two positions amongst our support staff. Um, really, uh, what it does is divide the duties uh, amongst our support staff in a, in a different way than we've done it before to more easily balance, uh, the diff- excuse me, the different duties in, in these two positions. Um, and so I would ask for the board's approval of the two job descriptions as well as the two employee status change forms. And I would be open for any questions if anyone has.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Womstead? Okay, if there are no questions, would someone like to entertain a motion to uh, put in place the two new position descriptions and move forward?
I vote.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Dave?
Madam Chair, I don't know who's talking, who, who's, uh, backing off or talking, but, uh, I've been following what, uh, Haley has done here. She's done a nice job working with HR, putting this package together and at, uh, no cost other than what's in their budget. So I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion in place. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Anything else, Ms. Womstead?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing that packet with us. It was very nice. Um, committee reports. Uh, Mr. Engen, Commissioner Engen, why don't you report from afar?
All right, well, uh, just the typical meetings I go to all the time and by Zoom so far. And nothing to report that's of earth-shaking significance. So I'll pass it to the next one.
Okay, then the next, uh, individual is Ms., um, Ms. Knopf, do you have something to report? I don't have anything to report today. Okay, then the next one is Commissioner Ross.
Madam Chair, uh, MPO. Uh, I was, uh, in fact, I sent everything to the other commissioners. But, uh, the house side of Congress in Washington DC has sent out some, uh, information and earmarks are in in play again. And looking for the top five projects uh, for this area for the MPO. And these, uh, submissions have to be submitted, uh, between April 1st and April 16th. So the request, and they're also meeting on this at the whole county commission in, uh, across the river on the same deal. Uh, the project is the Mayor Field Bridge. And it, uh, it's on the tips program already for years down the road. But they're looking for, uh, guidance and from this commission, uh, to request that they be put on the earmark for this area as one of the top five projects. Uh, Nick West, are you on at all?
Yes, yes, I am.
You want to comment on that at all, Nick? Can you hear me, Nick?
Uh, just, I could just barely, barely hear you. You're going in and out.
About the Mayor Field project? Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, sure, yeah, it's a I think the board is pretty familiar with the background of it. It's been in the plan of the MPO for many decades. And, uh, Commissioner Ross, I think you explained it pretty well. The county just needs to decide if we want to submit that as, as, uh, an earmark project to receive some federal funds. And I got to be honest with the board, I'm not real familiar with that program and how it works and how things are selected. But as with any grant program, if you don't submit, there's no chance of getting anything. Um, one particular item for the board is, is with any grant, there's usually a local cost share and, and I suppose in a grant application, someone would have to decide who's gonna put, you know, do the matching funds and and ma- maybe the answer is as far as a grant program goes, the county just says that for now and if we actually get the money, then we can go to, uh, MPO or state or city of ground forks and see who's going to cost share in it because we're talking about a $31 million project is the current estimate. So on a typical grant or typical federal aid, you know, you have your 20% match, well, 31 million and times point two, that 5 million?
Six.
Six? Yeah. Your engineer can't do very good math, but, um, uh, yeah, 6.2 million on a 20%, if that was a typical, uh, grant app. So that'd be a considerable amount of money that the county would need to, uh, pony up. Unless that's split two ways. I mean, I suppose that's total project and maybe someone on the Minnesota side would be, do half. So maybe we're at 3 million, but I think something like that could be figured out if we were selected. You'd always have an option to probably say no if we can't come up with the matching funds at a later date, but I think it, overall for the county, certainly it'd be a good addition. It'd be great to get some of that country traffic out of downtown. Especially, I think a sugarbeets is just a classic example to get that traffic out of going down, uh, Demers Avenue. And, um, it'd be a great addition. The one thing to keep in mind is that if a bridge was put across the red, it's going to spur a whole nother series of challenges for us. Traffic volume issues, like just try, try to envision, um, County Road 6 at 81. County Road 6 at 17 or Columbia. Um, those intersections are already you know, facing some issues with, you know, uh, crash volumes and things like that that we're considering and keeping an eye on. And if we add a bridge, those, those issues are going to become more prominent. So there is a trickle effect. Um, as the traffic increases, we'll have uh, just capacity issues on the road, the extra traffic and beating up the road. The roads would probably need to be beefed up to handle new volumes of traffic, things like that. And that could trickle all the way down through, uh, as County 6 wraps around on County 5 up to the airport, that whole loop I'd, I'd call it or, or bypass. I don't know if that's the right word or not, but um, I envision that whole corridor to become busy, become busier, have more traffic. So there could be more trickle effects down. That would be 100% local cost, but, um, countywide, it would, it, it'd be a good thing. And if we could get the federal government to pay the majority of it, it's hard to say no to that. So.
So Mr. West, are you suggesting that the commission would, uh, move forward and make a motion? And I'm asking, I guess Commissioner Ross as well. Uh, move forward, make a motion to support the, uh, Mayor Field Bridge as one of the top five projects in this region, uh, to be applied for with federal government funding?
Yeah, that's why they put it out from Washington DC.
Okay. Um, does somebody want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I guess as a member of the MPO, um, I would make that motion that we earmark uh, this project, uh, for the Mayor Field, uh, Bridge. And, um, and submit, uh, that request prior to the 16th of, uh, April.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second motion now.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Does anybody want to bring anything up or have discussion? Any discussion? If there is no discussion, then assuming a roll call vote, everyone who is in favor of the motion, uh, losing my mouth. Everyone, uh, in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. So then, uh, Commissioner Ross, this information will be carried on to the MPO and I'm assuming the MPO will be putting the application together?
Here.
Yeah, yes, Mr. West? Uh, or was that?
Chairman Peach, we couldn't hear what you were saying there.
Um, I'm assuming that, uh, that Commissioner Ross will share this information with the MPO and the MPO will be putting the application together to submit to the federal government.
I if the county is the sponsor, I think the county would need to put the app in. And the MPO would assist us in doing that. Or it's a combination effort there. Um, I guess, yeah, I'll volunteer for that. I suppose it makes sense that I do that. Um, so I'll, I'll figure that out. Between the myself and the MPO, we'll, we'll get the application submitted if that's the wishes of the board.
Okay.
Thank you, dear.
And then
Yeah.
The, the whole county commission will just write what, a letter of support?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, uh, Mr. Stridden sits on the MPO with me as a representative and they are meeting on it today also.
Okay, does Mr. Stridden recognize that they're going to have to pony up some money for this project?
Yeah.
Okay.
He does.
As long as they know that it's beyond a letter of support, I think it's quite important. So they don't think that Bradforks County is going to pick up the local share of this project?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for that information.
Just one more information on the MPO. The ad hoc committee had their first meeting this morning at 9 o'clock at City Hall to talk about the bridge in Towah. And, uh, I don't know exactly what went on with it because of restrict, because of COVID, it's how many people can attend. But the ad hoc people could get together. And, uh, they, uh, they need to, they're going to meet several times. They're all representatives from people that live in the areas to be affected by a bridge. And, uh, they need to make their final, uh, report by the end of the year. To the MPO.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. Anything else to report?
Nope.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Paul.
Nothing.
Okay, and as for myself, I have nothing to report either. Um, so moving on to unfinished and new business, I believe we have none. And then we have three pieces of correspondence, the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. Confirmant of benefits, wasn't there money coming back to the county?
Yes, there was. And we got, yes, for $81,000.
$81,000. Between that and saving money on a loan is wonderful. Keeping in mind that in future, we will need some building or some space for the sheriff's department and for juvenile detention and um, state's attorney. So we need to keep all of that in mind. I don't think that we can, can we, is this building designed to go up? Can it go up?
Probably not.
You can't go up?
Probably not.
Six stories is a mess. They didn't go down even as deep as it was supposed to for this building.
Okay, let's not talk about that then right now.
Madam Chair, I think to the emergency managers, they're most likely to be affected as well by
Emergency management could be too. So those are very significant, uh, offices that really, um, in the future, when we have our upcoming Administrative Services Committee meeting, which will be, um, on March 20th, April 20th, excuse me, at 1:30 PM Administrative Services, April 20th at 1:30 PM. And then the Social Services, hopefully I'm not over speaking, um, the Director of the Social Services Board, uh, Mr. Mr. Scott, uh, but that will be at 3 PM. And Michelle will be working with Scott and myself to get that schedule. We're just kind of pushing it an hour later. But obviously, we think about, uh, the relative location of those programs now, those offices, and probably the necessity to keep them in the downtown area instead of, um, moving them to an outer, an outer part of the city where there may be more land access. But we think about, uh, what the role is there. So that's important. So we got $81,000. And then, um, the next item on the agenda is just correspondence, the county superintendent is supposed to report.
Sorry.
And that one is, um, from the administrator who is our county superintendent, who is also the superintendent in Laramore. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So talking about school nursing, the spelling bees, math counts. Um, I believe for the most parts, all, all the, uh, students in Bradforks County are back in school. Um, it was ironic that yesterday is usually the first, uh, the Monday after the Easter week is usually the first, uh, snow day that they take. And everybody was off that date because there was not a snow day. And I did visit with one student said, I don't think you'll ever have a snow day ever again because you'll have school virtually instead of missing. And, and the child said, that's all right. Then we, if we know we're supposed to get out May 25th or whatever, we'll know that's the date. So he was fine with schools being held and not having to go outside during the storm. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, this is, this is Dave.
Yes, yes, Dave.
What, what is the admin, uh, admin services meeting on April 20th? I, I couldn't hear all of what you said.
Administrative Services Committee meeting, which we tried to hold today, but due to technical difficulties, we're unable to hold and be able to hear everybody. We're going to have that the next commission meeting date, which is April 20th. And that will start at 1:30 PM.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, it needs to be completed by 3 o'clock as the Social Services Zone Board meeting is held at 3 o'clock, one hour prior to the commission meeting. So we will, we'll make sure that that gets noticed along with those meetings get noticed along with the coming commission meeting. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? If not, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same.